All right, I'll call this evening's meeting to order. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Start things off, I'll go ahead and ask Commissioner Almond for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for this time that you've given us, thank you for the freedom that you've allowed us to have, Lord, to come here and to serve, God. Lord, I lift up our citizens of our great county, God, I lift up our county employees, and I pray that you give our board wisdom and discernment tonight. Praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda? Oh, it goes with number five, okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Commissioner Almond, sir, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Number one on the agenda tonight is a Transportation Advisory Board request. Randy Shank is our presenter.
So, what I'm coming before here is, and I'll read straight off of the agenda item here, is the Transportation Department, or SCUSA, is in need of two action items from you guys this evening. I'm seeking reappointment of the following current members to an extension for the 2020 through 2022 years. The current members in their respective areas of representation are Tamia Albertson of Smart Start, Rod Barbie of Veterans Affairs, Tate Daniels, an elected official, Beth Harky, mental health, Dr. Heather Hill, College University, Becky McKeon from the Health, Chris Lambert from the CBB, Stacy Ragsdale from DSS, Brian Simpson with EMS, Mary Walls, Vocational Rehab, and then Becky Wimhoff with Senior Services. Each of these members I have contacted with, they are currently on the board, and they've all agreed to a two-year extension and to continue to serve the Transportation Advisory Board with your approval. Do you want me to go and read the second request?
Let's go ahead and take care of that one.
Okay.
So, the request from the Transportation Advisory Board is to approve the listed folks. Is there any discussion? Not, what's the pleasure of the board on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the first one, the listed one.
Motion by Commissioner Lohhan to approve the list as presented. A second by Commissioner Jordan. All those, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. The second item on the agenda request is, I'm seeking appointment of three vacant slots that are currently on the Transportation Advisory Board. I've listed those three vacant slots and their areas of requested representation, or areas that they may have represented in the past. The first one is the Chamber of Commerce slot that became available due to recent staff changes at the Chamber of Commerce. I did speak with Sandy Selvi Mullis, and she is the interim president of the chamber, and she's agreed to fill this if it's your recommendation, or if you feel that she would be a good fit for that. The other two, there's a slot that was typically filled by a current City of Albemarle Council member, and then the final one is a vacant slot, and that one's been vacant for a while that represented the South Stanley area of the county. And, you know, at this point, I'll just kind of see where you guys want me to go.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, questions?
Well, we meet four times a year. We're required by the DOT to have four annual meetings, and we do one in each quarter. So, it's not an extensive commitment, but it is some commitment. We usually meet, it usually takes about an hour and a half, and they're good for, you know, providing some direction, maybe new routes, or just some suggestions from the community. They represent, you know, all parts of the community to try to give some direction as to how they'd like to see SCUSA transform, if you will.
How, what time is it?
Usually the meetings are, I try to schedule them at noon, and they'll typically be over about 1:30.
I'd like to record that, too.
Yeah.
Don't know if he would be, sort of.
Who's that?
Cecil Curly.
Okay.
Cecil, retired from the line product, human resource manager for the entire company. And he would like to be a great board member.
And he would be from the South Stanley area?
He lives in Norwood, Gettysburg, like Hillary.
Okay.
Norwood, Pittsburgh, Norwood, Maryland.
Okay.
Was this board, a board of city of Albemarle County member, or would we just directly go to the town council and let that board, whatever it is, move up?
I would recommend that we would ask Randy to contact the city manager and get recommendations from them if they want to play, and then we would ask Randy to come up.
Okay. So, at this point, can we make, can we, Sandy Selvi, Sandy Selvi, move over to the night, and then remember to make a deal with her?
Yes.
Okay, so, just to clarify, you want me to contact Mr. Curly, and then also contact Michael Ferris about the city?
Yeah, just reach out to the city and see if they have a prospective member of the city council that wants to fill it.
Okay.
And bring that name back to us.
Okay.
That way you have equal, kind of, equal representation.
I will.
Randy, I'll be happy to do this early.
Yes, thank you. And we're good to go with the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, handle it in just a second. Yeah, I would just recommend to the board that maybe you don't appoint Sandy as, appoint Sandy, but actually appoint the chamber president to serve on this board. That way, if, when she become, doesn't, is no longer the interim, and someone else is in place, they don't have to come, doesn't have to come back to you five or six months from now. It's kind of like with the EDC, the chamber, or the Stanley Community College president serves on the board, and hit that person's capacity, so just put the, I would recommend you just do the chamber president in their capacity.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Commissioner Jordan, did you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I made the motion that we appoint Sandy Selvi Mullis, the interim president, to the board, that we, actually, that's it, because he'll come back the two days, the next meeting, right? Yeah, that's it.
The Chamber of Commerce president, are you okay with that? All right, so, a motion to appoint the Chamber of Commerce president, whoever that may be, in that capacity, to the seat. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number two tonight is the appointment, or reappointment, to the Senior Services Advisory Board. Presenter is going to be Ms. Becky Wimhoff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Our advisory board has four members whose term is expiring at the end of October. Two of these board members would like to be reappointed, and the two of the four feel like that they, it's time for them to get off, and they, both of these individuals have served several terms on our advisory board. The two board members that would like to be reappointed is Dolores Chambers from Baden and Danny Bowen from Richfield. The two board members that would like to rotate off is Sylvia Linkerfelt of Millingport and Dewey Pressler of Albemarle. Our bylaws state that they, that the advisory board is to serve in an advisory capacity to not only you, but also to me as well, on aging issues, aging needs in the county, and activities in, that they feel like seniors would be interested in. It also states in our bylaws, sorry, that the, it's, the individuals should represent the following categories: government, attorney, medical, minority, clergy, older adult, at large citizens, and a representative from COG. And we do try to meet that criteria whenever we're looking at board members. And we do try also to have a good representation from across the county, simply because if they're to bring aging issues and needs to us, we feel like we need representation from all parts of the county. So therefore, I'd like for, I'm requesting that you reappoint, reappoint Dolores Chambers from Baden and Danny Bowen from Richfield to be reappointed to the advisory board for another three-year term. And I'm requesting that Brenda Spencer of Albemarle replace Dewey Pressler and Bill Riggsby replace Sylvia Linkerfelt from Millingport, and that they be, be appointed to the board to serve a three-year term, ending October 30th, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Wimhoff. Is there any questions?
Ms. Wimhoff, which position do Brenda Spencer and Bill Riggsby want to fill?
Brenda Spencer is fulfilling Dewey Pressler's position, and she lives, they both, pardon me?
What is she as far as a representation?
She is a minority.
Okay.
She, and she actually, let me also mention, she actually worked for DSS for 25 years in the aging field.
And how about Bill Riggsby?
Bill Riggsby serves on the Region F Aging Advisory Board, and he's an active participant at the Senior Center.
Any other questions? Not, we have a recommendation from the Senior Services Board. Mr. Jordan?
I made the motion that we reappoint Dolores Chambers and Danny Bowen for another three-year term, and that we appoint Brenda Spencer and Bill Riggsby renewed three-year term ending October 30th, 2022.
All right, motion by Commissioner Jordan, and a second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to replace the board of the board. The name Stephanie Brown, one of my peers. She's from Baden, she's born in 1949, and she's a senior. She works in education. And she currently does not serve on any other board.
Okay, so we need...
Everybody has voted, right?
In addition to the Owen Chambers, Spencer, Bill, or in addition?
I'm not going to limit any of these, got your name, got your name, just putting it before you, I said it, Stephanie Brown. We call she does not serve in any of the county.
All right, are there any other nominations? Commissioner Jordan, you made that in the form of a motion. Can you, would you be willing to withdraw the motion and just make those as nominations?
I would.
Make it official.
I would.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. So, we have five nominees, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll declare the nominations closed. And each member has four votes, so when I present the name, please raise your hand as to who you're going to vote for. The first name on my list is Ms. Stephanie Brown. You in favor of Ms. Brown, please raise your hand.
My hand's raised.
Sorry, I didn't think about that, Commissioner Morgan. Thank you. I'm recording two votes for Ms. Brown. Danny Bowen.
My hand's raised.
Recording seven votes for Danny Bowen. Dolores Chambers.
My hand's raised.
I'm recording seven votes for Ms. Chambers. Dewey Pressler.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Spencer, Brenda Spencer. Recording five votes for Brenda Spencer. And Bill Riggsby.
My hand's raised.
I'm recording six votes for Mr. Riggsby. Load that up. Okay. My record shows that Danny Bowen, Dolores Chambers, Brenda Spencer, and Bill Riggsby will be the members to the board.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Wimhoff.
Okay, thank you. I believe I'm up here for the next two items.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number three is the approval of Dr. Joan Udi as the Region F Aging Advisory Council alternate delegate for Stanley County.
Right. The Region F Aging Advisory Committee is a group that is approved by the Commissioners in every county, and they go to COG in Charlotte about four times a year, and they approve aging issues. In fact, they have to approve the Home and Community Care Block grant funds that we get here in the county, so they know what our funding is going to be even before we do. But Stanley County is represented on this committee with three delegates and one alternate delegate. The three delegate positions are already filled, but the alternate delegate position is vacant. Dr. Joan Udi has indicated an interest in serving on this board, in fact, she's even attended one of the meetings just to see if this would be what she wanted to serve on, and it is. So, I would, am requesting that Dr. Joan Udi be appointed to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee as an alternate delegate with a term expiring 6/30/2021.
Thank you. There are multiple candidates for that seat, so I will open the floor for a nomination of that position. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Almond?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Joan Udi to be the Region F Aging Advisory Committee alternate.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lohan?
I'd like to nominate James Bernacki, who is a retired minister who does not serve on any other Stanley County committee at this time.
Nomination for Joan Udi and James Bernacki. Any other nominations? I don't think there's any more to choose from. I'll declare the nominations closed. Each member has one vote. If you are in favor of Ms. Joan Udi, please raise your hand.
My hand's raised.
I'd like to ask a question, I'm here before those.
Okay.
Do you think that those, Mr. Bernacki, could give us a, you could give us a, a good one?
I know he's been a pastor of the Episcopal Church for years, I'm not sure how long. I've been around Pastor Bernacki, or Father Bernacki, just in the public, seeing him at different events, but I know he led that church for a long time.
Any other questions before we vote? Commissioner Morgan, I'm, we're going to actually vote again, so if you're in favor of Ms. Joan Udi, please raise your hand.
My hand's raised.
I'm going to record three votes for Ms. Joan Udi. If you're in favor of James Bernacki, please raise your hand. I'm going to record four votes for Mr. James Bernacki. Ms. Wimhoff, that'll mean Mr. Bernacki will be the boardman.
Okay.
Or alternate.
Okay.
Item number four on tonight's agenda is the naming of the rooms at the Senior Center. Again, Ms. Wimhoff.
Okay. Some months back, our advisory board started talking about why didn't we have names for all of our rooms at the Senior Center, and that probably resulted from us having the rabbi room named. And that was a good, you know, that was a good thought. There was a lot of discussion, and so I'm presenting to you tonight some names that the advisory board would like to have named to the, to the different rooms that we use at the Senior Center. We would like for the big room, the auditorium, the room that we have at the employee's Christmas party, to be called the Stanley Room. We have a large classroom, it's the largest classroom of the ones that we have, and we would like that to be named the Hinson Room, simply after the Hinson family, Clarence and Ethel Hinson, who were very, very instrumental in getting a senior center here in Stanley County. They worked very hard. Finally, it became a reality, and then after that, they were practically at the Senior Center every day, doing, even doing some plumbing work, or woodwork, whatever might need to be done, they were doing that. We have a room that, a smaller classroom is our newest one, and it's adjacent to the big room, or to our auditorium, and we'd like to call it the Friends Room, because the friends of the Senior Center actually funded the renovation of that room.
I have one question.
Okay.
I'll open it up to other Commissioners. I know you stated some, some criteria, but was there like a, I don't know, for lack of a better word, a rubric from the teaching world that you kind of went through to, especially when we're naming it after somebody?
It was simply because the board, the advisory board knows how much the Hinsons did for us.
Okay.
So their family does not know I'm even here tonight, that, they do not know anything about the naming of the room at all. But I thought it was just a great way to recognize some volunteer, two deeply committed volunteers who made the Senior Center a reality.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other questions? Not, what's the?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we name the large classroom, I think that's correct, the Hinson Room in memory of Clarence and Ethel Hinson. And the smaller classroom be named the Friends Room. Is that correct?
That's right.
And, one for Stanley Room, I think.
Auditorium.
Auditorium.
All right, so a motion by Commissioner Lohan to accept the recommendation from the Senior Service, Senior Services Advisory Board, as it was presented, a second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Wimhoff.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five tonight is the Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program. Presenter is Ms. Patricia Hancock.
I am Patricia Hancock, and I'm the Director of Nursing at the Health Department. October is known as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Did you know that breast cancer is the second leading cause of cancer deaths in women in North Carolina? And North Carolina women have a one in eight lifetime risk of developing cancer, breast cancer. Each year, there are over 6,000 women in North Carolina that are diagnosed with breast cancer, and over 1,000 of those women will die. Even though this presentation is geared mainly towards men, mainly towards women, breast cancer does happen in men. Just this past week, on Good Morning America, Michael Strahan and Beyonce's dad were on there, and both of them were talking about how they had been personally affected by breast cancer. Beyonce's dad actually had breast cancer, and Michael Strahan's brother had that. So even though men, it is very rare for men to have breast cancer, men need to know what the symptoms of breast cancer are for them. Simply being a woman is the main risk factor for breast cancer. Your risk increase as your age increases. Most breast cancers occur in women after the age of 50. Early menstrual periods or late menopause also put women at a higher risk. Women who have never given birth, or women who give birth after the age of 30, also put them at a higher risk for breast cancer. A woman who has had cancer in one breast is more likely to develop cancer in the other breast, or to have cancer that comes in another spot on that same breast. Women who are overweight or obese, and especially those after menopause, are at increased risk of having breast cancer. There's a gene that you've heard about, there's a lot of testing going on, which is the BRCA gene. The BRCA gene normally helps prevent breast cancer by making proteins that keep cells from growing abnormally. But you can get mutated copies of that gene from either parent, and that puts you at higher risk. One of the benefits of the Affordable Care Act was that it required that insurance companies cover that genetic testing and counseling for certain women, those that are at higher The symptoms of breast cancer is a lump or thickening in or near the breast, or the underarm, a change in size or shape of the breast, an abnormal discharge from the nipple, or a change in the skin color, the feel, or the texture of the skin of the breast, areola, or nipple. Fifty percent of masses are found in the upper outer quadrant of the breast. In men, breast cancer is usually detected as a hard lump underneath the nipple, or the areola. Mortality in men is higher, mainly because men do not think about breast cancer happening in them, and that causes a delay in treatment. Early cancer detection and screening saves lives. Annual clinical breast exams and mammograms are very helpful in detecting and preventing for breast cancer. Monthly self-breast exams are a useful tool for women to find changes in their own breast. Mammograms are X-rays of the breast, and they're used for screening and diagnosis. Mammograms are used to look for disease, and also to diagnose or rule out disease. About 10% of women... About 10% of women who have a mammogram will have to go for some other type of follow-up test, but normally, it will only be another mammogram that they need, and they'll have cancer ruled out. So what are we doing in the fight against breast cancer? In your packet, you should have gotten a brochure on the North Carolina Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, and that's what we refer to as the BSEP Program. The BSEP Program offers free or low-cost breast cancer screenings and follow-up to eligible women in North Carolina. We are one of 61 health departments that provide BSEP services to the citizens of the state of North Carolina, and we provide them to the citizens here of Stanley County. BSEP services do not necessarily have to be provided by a health department, they can be contracted out to private providers, but we're fortunate that our health department is one of those providers. The eligibility requirements for BSEP are for women who are uninsured or underinsured, they are without Medicare Part B or Medicaid, they are between the ages of 40 and 64 for the breast screening services, and cervical cancer screening is also a part of that program. The age is a little bit different for that, it's between 21 and 64 years of age. And there is a household income requirement for those that are at or below the 250% of poverty. In regards to the federal poverty level, an individual can have an income up to $31,225 and still qualify for the BSEP Program. A family of four can make up to $64,375. So even though people may think that they do not qualify for BSEP, there is a lot of variability there in income that they truly may qualify for that service. Through BSEP, they provide clinical breast exams, mammograms, diagnostic procedures, and we can qualify people for a specific type of Medicaid, which is known as BSEP Medicaid. The diagnostic procedures can include diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds of the breast, and fine needle aspirations. In this past fiscal year, our target number for the BSEP Program was 29. We actually saw 34 patients through the BSEP Program. Most of our patients are either self-referred, or they come in from one of our community partners. Of the 34 patients that we saw this past fiscal year, seven were referred for some type of follow-up. Of those seven, one of them actually turned out to have breast cancer. We work closely with the breast center. If the breast center finds someone that has an abnormality in one of their tests, and they don't have the means for treatment or further screening, they call us and refer to us to see if there's something we can do to assist them. And most of the time, we can, if we can get them in before they have that final diagnosis, we can enroll them in the program. This is Ms. Connie Blaylock. Ms. Blaylock came to us after being referred from one of our community partners. She had found a lump in her breast in January of 2018, and went to her primary doctor for follow-up. She had had a biopsy done six to seven years prior, but that biopsy was negative. At the time she found the lump, Ms. Blaylock was a small business owner. She did not have health insurance because she could not afford it, and she lacked the finances necessary for the additional screening and treatment that she needed. Her provider had ordered a mammogram and ultrasound that were abnormal. Our community partner contacted the health department to see if there was anything that we could do for her, and we were able to enroll her into the BSEP Program. That allowed us to help provide the follow-up and the treatment that she needed, and we were also able to get her enrolled in BSEP Medicaid. That BSEP Medicaid helped provide her for the treatments that she was gonna have to have, which you know, cancer treatments are very expensive. So going back to the beginning, when we talk about women in North Carolina have a one in eight chance, who is your one in eight? Is it your mother? Is it your grandmother? What about a sister or a coworker? It could be an aunt or a daughter, could be a best friend or a wife. It could be someone that you go to church with, or a high school classmate, or it could be a business owner of someone that you're going in and you're enjoying the services that they provide. These two ladies are our one in eight. Mary Ann Springer is a home health nurse with Stanley County Health Department. She was diagnosed with invasive ductal carcinoma, stage three, in July 27th of 2011. She is an eight-year survivor. Prior to that, Mary Ann had kidney cancer that she developed in 2002. So when we really look at her survival rate, she is a 17-year survivor. Deborah Honeycutt is a lab tech with Stanley County Health Department. She was first diagnosed with cancer in 1997. Deborah had a mastectomy, and she began treatments. She was on medication for five years, and she was having yearly mammograms. They were all negative until 2010. In 2010, the cancer had returned. The only problem was this time it had metastasized to her lung. Deborah underwent chemotherapy for six months, and she continues to receive infusions and oral medications today, and she will for the remainder of her life. Deborah continues to fight, and she continues to be an inspiration to all of those that she knows. At Stanley County Health Department, we are supporting the fighters, we're admiring the survivors, we're honoring the taken, and we're never, ever giving up hope. On Monday, September 30th, President Donald Trump signed a presidential proclamation on National Breast Cancer Awareness Month for 2019. In that proclamation, he asked local states and local jurisdictions to do the same. This past Thursday, the Stanley County Consolidated Human Services Board passed a proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Stanley County. Also in your packet, you had a proclamation, and I'm not gonna read the proclamation out loud, but we are encouraging you to accept that proclamation and approve it for Stanley County and recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October of 2019, for Stanley County. The slide that's in front of you has the resources for where all of the information in this presentation came from. It also has additional information in regards to breast cancer for women and men, and also for any types of screening or treatments that would be needed for breast cancer. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No, we've been presented with a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Intertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
I move we approve the proclamation as presented.
Motion on the phone by Commissioner Morgan, and a second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Item number six is a nursing home community advisory committee appointment. Presenter is County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have the information in front of you. Ms. Joyce Ross has completed her term and has agreed to serve again. Her volunteer applications in the packet, and there were no additional applications at the current time. So the request is to reappoint Ms. Joyce Ross to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term, ending September 30th, 2022.
Request to approve Ms. Joyce Ross to be reappointed by the county manager. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'll make the motion to proceed with appointing Joyce Ross to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven is the Tax Administrator Reappointment. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The board has requested to reappoint Mr. Clinton Swearingen as tax administrator for a period beginning from October 29th of 2019 through October 28th of 2023, and to approve the purchase of a public official bond, the amount of $100,000. In October of 2015, the board appointed Clinton as tax administrator for a four-year term. And I'd wanna point out and note that during Clinton's most recent four-year term, the tax collection rate has increased every year, and Clinton and his staff are commended for that. In fact, I think this year, we may have had the highest rate we've ever had in Stanley County. So certainly, the economy plays a role in that, but I also believe Clinton's leadership in holding folks accountable for getting the work done and creating an environment down there and a culture that folks wanna show up and help us out and achieve that. I think that is, plays a part in it as well. So I think that the board would be well-served to consider reappointing him for a four-year term. Per the statutes, require an appointment of a tax assessor and tax collector. The appointment period may be no less than two years and no more than four years. The tax collector shall be allowed to begin their duties until, can't begin their duties until they're furnished a bond. And with the appointment of Mr. Swearingen as tax manager, the bond covering him and his fiscal custody would also needs to be renewed, so that's why you need to take action on not only the appointment or reappointment, but also that public official bond, the amount of $100,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the county manager? Seek a motion to approve Clinton Swearingen for the tax administrator for a four-year term effective October 29th, and approve his public official bond in the amount of $100,000. Commissioner Jordan, and I think a second from Barbie. Oh, you made a motion? I'm sorry, I missed that. A motion from Commissioner Barbie, and a second from Commissioner Jordan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number eight tonight is an asset purchase agreement for the Richfield Sewer System. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet is the proposed asset purchase agreement that our legal counsel diligently worked on over several months to put together with the assistance of the town of Richfield, and getting information from them to assist us with that. All the required easements and property will be transferred by Richfield to the county for that system, sewer collection system. We already transmit Richfield Sewer to Albemarle for treatment, not only Richfield Sewer, but also Meisenheimer and New London's. As part of this, the county will also assume outstanding loan associated with their collection system, which is approximately $225,000. The loan will be repaid with the revenue generated by the collection system. That's already built into their fee schedule. So we would ask you to review and consider authorizing the chairman and staff to execute the asset purchase agreement, and any other necessary accompanying documents, easements, and other documents that are associated with the acquisition on behalf of the county. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the county manager? I know, just for the sake of the public, Jenny, we're closing on this maybe by the end of the month, if this passes.
We hope so. We hope to close Friday.
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board with this agreement? Motion to proceed with the purchase of the asset by Commissioner Lohan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number nine on the agenda is the criteria used to build construction delivery method for a new trades facility at Stanley Community College campus. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Per statute, the county must establish criteria to justify and utilize the design-build-delivery method for construction contracts. Attached in your packet is the proposed criteria for the board to consider utilizing design-build. We've used design-build at the Community College previously for the cosmetology building, and it was a very effective method to getting the building built in a very efficient manner, as well as cost-effective. We also are currently using design-build for the EMS base. And the difference between the sort of typical where you go and you do an RFP or RFQ for an architect, the architect works with the staff to design it, then you bid it, and then you build it. This, you do an RFQ for a general contractor, and then you just, you pick the general contractor, the general contractor works with an architect, their own architect, to design it and build it. And so you're cutting out a step in time and money, for that matter. And so this is, this method has worked well for us. We also used this method when we did the expansion of the Aggreg Civic Center up there, obviously at a smaller scale, but we use this method there as well. So I'd be more happy to answer any questions. The criteria are attached in your packet. This is the first step. Once the board approves this, we will issue an RFQ and let the general contractors out there in the community, and not just this community, but all over the state, all over the region, submit a packet, and then from that, we will make a recommendation to you of a general contractor to utilize, and then they will start the process of designing it, and then coming up with a number not to exceed cost, and then that's when you all would get involved again, to say, yeah, that works, or no, that doesn't work, it's too high, we need to, we need to scale that back. So that's, this is sort of step one in the process of starting that project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we adopt the proposed criteria to utilize the design-build construction delivery method for the construction of the new trade facial facility at Stanley Community College.
Motion by Commissioner Jordan to utilize the design-build construction method for the new facility at Stanley Community College. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number 10 on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? If not, we'll seek a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Almond. Is there a second by Commissioner Jordan? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. And that brings us to public comment. And Mr. Peter Ashudo has signed up for public comment.
This is, thank you for having me. This is a follow-up to the presentation I gave of things like a year and a half ago. Some of y'all weren't on the board then, I don't think, but if you need more information, I'd be glad to send it to you. Just wanna show you the current capacity levels at the school, and as it's been projected, they keep going down for various reasons. Seventeen of the last 19 years, the attendance at the ADM, at Stanley County Schools, has dropped. We've lost 1,713 students since 2001, 2002. Last year, there was a little bump, that's what the demographer did project, that last year, we were gonna have a bump, but then we were dropping. but then we would drop again. So we dropped 90 people this year. Looking at the elementary school levels, we lost, there's 42 less kids this year in elementary schools than there was at the start of last year. And you look at one concern, it's always been Millingport. Millingport's down to 200 students, 209 students. And if you look at Central Elementary School, they used to be up around, close to 600. At one time, they were over 600, now they're down to 544. But 600's a good number to let you know that we can handle a 600-person elementary, 600-kid elementary school in Stanley County. Moving on to the next one, the middle schools have 56 more kids than last year. But basically, if you add the numbers up, West Stanley has 613 students, they're the biggest. They used to have close to 700. And if you add the other three schools, the other three middle schools up and divided it by two, they'd be the same size, pretty much, as West Stanley. So you'd have three, if you shuttered a middle school, you'd basically have three 600-kid elementary schools. Then go to high school, they've lost 177 kids at the four traditional high schools this year. And there's 707 at West Stanley, they're the largest. At one time, they had 1,000 students. So basically, you could shutter one high school, and you'd have, you'd have three schools about the same size. And then real quick, look at Albemarle High School, they're down to 338 students in their traditional curriculum. That's down from over 400 last year. Now, they do have 42 students in a separate curriculum at Albemarle High School, but what's happening now is you're losing the students. Anyway, just wanted to share this with you guys. This information is good to look at. You guys should partner with the schools about this, because every year, we do have problems with money with the schools, and a lot of it is, you're just wasting money with too many schools and not enough kids.
Anybody else that wants to speak for public comment? If none, we'll go to Commissioner comments or updates. We'll start with Commissioner Lawhan this evening.
Give you an update on residential home permits. I think this is outstanding. January through September, our apartment, building department has issued 310 new home building permits, which is up 53% over the same period last year. And last year was a good year. Big growth in residential homes. Total dollars, $37,109. Great economic report for Stanley County. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
Don't have anything major to report. I do have one update for everybody that has asked me the single most often asked question since I got elected. Yes, the NC DOT has started work on Main Street. No, I had nothing to do with it. I'm just glad it's getting done. So I would avoid East Main Street for a while.
Commissioner Barbie?
I don't have a tad either, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to run around Western Stanley County to see all the growth and building going on, so I got a funny feeling these schools will be utilized.
Commissioner Farr?
Commissioner Almond? Three quick things. Had my library board meeting, and now you can check out a book three times, and I told them I would announce that tonight, so just FYI. And I have a COG meeting next Wednesday, and I'll bring y'all updates for it at next month's meeting. Last thing, on a serious note, I'd like for you guys and everybody in the audience to please remember Corey Morgan and your prayers. He's fighting cancer right now. He's 20 years old, from out of Indy, and he's in Boston right now taking a treatment. So y'all please remember him.
Mr. Morgan, you got anything on the phone?
No comment.
You know, I think I'll go back to Commissioner Lawhan's housing permit update. I think my wife is excited that after seven years, I'm in the count this month for a building permit, so my wife is finally excited about that. I made the count, but I don't think so. I think I'm below average, but I would like to thank the state delegation commissioner, Representative Sasser, and Senator Ford. They actually worked on a bill to get through the House and the Senate for volunteer firefighters in our community. And it's not big. Volunteer firefighters, you know, spend a lot of time away from their families. I was very active before I became commissioner, and unfortunately, I haven't been as active as I want to be with the fire department since I became a commissioner. But it takes a lot of time, and they got a bill passed to help support volunteer firefighters get a discount on hunting license. And you know, that sounds like it's not that big of a deal, but a lifetime hunting license is, you know, $1,500, and that adds up every year. So they actually get those at half price if you're a volunteer firefighter in good standing for five years. So I really applaud them and appreciate the work they did on behalf of the volunteer firefighters. And I know the firefighters here in Stanley County really appreciated it, because Commissioner Farr and I announced that at the association dinner, what, two weeks ago? And I know they were really excited about that, because that helps them out, because most of them are hunters and fishers too. So, but that's all I have tonight. If you know other comment. I will seek a motion to adjourn closed session for economic development, in accordance with General Statute 14331811A4, and personnel, to discuss a personnel issue in accordance with General Statute 1433811A6. Motion by Commissioner Jordan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. All those in favor of going to closed session, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.